Recording in progress. Meeting of the City of Pacifica Planning Commission. I'm kind of hearing, I sound very, um, I'm presenting to the people. Can you try to? Do you want to try your microphone?
Test, test, test. Hello, hello, hello.
They're all doing it.
I mean, we could do it, it's just not gonna...
Is it something you can... It's echoing.
This is...
Are staff, staff phones doing that?
Test, test.
Um, 2024, welcome to the Pacifica Planning Commission. On the card, please indicate the agenda item hashtag on which you wish to comment or... Okay. All right, this meeting is called to order. It's gonna go great, I can tell. Um, hey, we have roll call, please.
Chair Hauser?
Here.
Vice Chair Ferguson?
Here.
Commissioner Berman?
Present.
Commissioner Devine?
Present.
Commissioner Godwin?
Present.
Commissioner Redfield?
Present.
Commissioner Wright?
Present.
Vice Chair, can you please lead us in the slip to the block?
As you will. Friends allegiance, here we fly. In the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Um, before we get into administrative business, any member of the public wishing to make public comment on any item should complete a speaker card and bring it to the front. Uh, on the card, please indicate the agenda item on which you wish to speak, or oral communications for items not on the agenda. Members of the public may also participate in the meeting via Zoom or by the dial-in option shown on the screen, so let's show that. Once we, we get to the item on which you wish to comment, press star nine to raise your hand if dialing by phone. Public meetings are a limited public forum meeting, that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Comments on non-agendized items must be, uh, must address matters within the subject jurisdiction of the planning commission, and comments on agendized items must relate to that specific item. If comments do not fall into one of these categories, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city or on topic. If the warning is not followed, the chair will direct the city clerk to cut off the microphone, and throughout this warning system, I will seek the assistance of the city attorney in identifying comments not related to the agenda item, or not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. So that brings us to administrative business. Um, I do not have speaker cards for administrative business. Is anyone raising their hand?
There are no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay. So with that being said, um, does someone wanna, oh. Okay. Uh, does someone want to make a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, let's please vote. Okay. Um, and that motion passes unanimously. So, um, we do not have minutes to review tonight, um, we do not have a designation of liaison to city council, is that still the case, staff? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Um, which brings us to oral communications. I have one speaker card, which I believe is for item one. Does anyone, are, is there anyone on the phone wishing to make oral communication?
We have one raised hand. Cliff Lawrence, you may unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Cliff, we can hear you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, my name's Cliff Lawrence, and, uh, I had hoped to come down and be there this evening, but, uh, things didn't work out that way. Uh, I want to say first that I want to recognize that our city staff works very hard. And a lot's being asked of them. I don't know if we can ask them to work harder. I think maybe we need to, uh, help them work smarter. And here's why I say that. There's things like your, uh, planning, active planning, uh, uh, applications, hasn't been updated since June 26th. Now, this is really the city's public-facing constructive notices, I like to call it. Constructive notice is very important. Uh, I worked for 20 years for the clerk recorder in Sacramento. So, what I said, I've written here, uh, should anyone believe that no new applications have been submitted since the 26th? And how many SB 330 applications have been received in that time? Because, see, there's a 180-day clock that, uh, gets triggered when it's filed, and who's watching the clock? We don't even know what's going on. We don't know how many new ones there are. Again, our staff works hard, but they've not been given the tools to work efficiently. Based on the information I see for the active planning applications, there are two public-facing lists, which are apparently not integrated with each other, or a central database. It appears this data is entered multiple times. The downloaded version is not organized the same way as the online version. It appears there's no validation of the data as it is entered. And from what I see, staff is entering the name, saying data multiple times, and working without any validation tools. For instance, parcel numbers are not validated against the county assessor database. Our list has 12 invalid APNs in it. The situs addresses are not validated against the county database. Our downloaded list lists two invalid situs addresses. Numbers are not validated as numbers. We actually have a number that appears as a date. I don't believe I've captured all the errors. If the above is true for just these two public-facing systems, how many more times is data being entered multiple times when it should be leveraged and populated in other downline applications? Has the city implemented any workflow applications? Correctly integrated systems save time and preserves the integrity of data. Uh, if you, uh, want to discuss this with me, any further, let me know.
Thank you, Cliff.
Uh, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other raised hands for oral communications?
There are no more raised hands.
Okay. Um, so with that, we'll close oral communications. Um, we have no consent items tonight, and that brings us to, uh, continued public hearings. So, item one is the Sharp Park PDA pedestrian improvement project, um, and our staff has a staff report.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is James Lynn, Associate Planner with the City of Pacifica Planning Division. I am joined this evening with Roland Yip, Deputy Director of Public Works, Brian Bautista, Assistant Engineer with the Public Works Division, and Erin Wayne, Associate Consultant Arborist with the Tree Management Experts. We are here to introduce the continued public hearing item number one on tonight's agenda. The applicant is applying for a coastal development permit and tree permit for the implementation of improvements related to the city's 2020s pedestrian. The project includes work... Oh. It's, uh... Uh, sorry for the technical difficulties. No, you're okay.
One moment, sorry, technical difficulty with the presentation.
Chair, uh, I can continue while, um, they're pulling up the report, or would you rather wait for...
So, I, I was gonna ask you, um, you know, this is obviously like a very graphic explanation. Is it, if, if it's helpful, and I think we're close, I think it would make more sense to wait.
Uh, sorry about that, thank you. To continue, the project includes work with the city's existing public right-of-way on Paloma Avenue, Carmel Avenue, and Santa Maria Avenue between Beach and Francisco Boulevard, which includes upgraded sidewalks, dry white approaches, curb, gutter, and curb ramps in order to bring up to compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. The project would also repair and resurface streets within the project area, as well as updates to potential crosswalks and bicycle Class 3B striping. The project is funded by the City/County Association of Governments of San Mateo and the One Bay Area Grant. I will go ahead and now pass it over to Roland and the rest of the engineering team, who will, and, address questions and comments raised by the planning commission during the August 5th, uh, planning commission meeting.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and, uh, planning commissioners. Roland Yip, Deputy Director of Public Works/City Engineer. And I'd like to go over the, the comments from the previous meeting. Sorry, we're having some technical difficulties again. Oh, okay. Okay. So, um, we had several questions that came up during the meeting. I am gonna go over the six, uh, major questions, and the remaining questions are in one of the attachments in the packet. There was a question that asked whether design changes can be incorporated in the project at this time. Based on staff's review, the attached plan set is currently at 100% design, and cannot be amended without further time delays and budget augmentation from the city council. The department has used the budget in the authorized consultant contract. Additional scope items such as demolition plan, landscape plan, and other plan changes would likely require further authorization from the city council for additional funding. Uh, the, another question that requested for the demolition plan to be included with the plan set. The demolition information is covered with the project specifications, bid descriptions, and the demolition needed for the concrete, um, hot mix asphalt plug and base repairs are paid under the unit prices to install those particular improvements. And then we can, I have highlighted a reference plan on Attachment G, on sheet C6. So, this is one of the busier plans, and, um, if we were to separate the demolition plan out, all of the highlighted areas in red, in yellow, and in purple, so red is the concrete, yellow is the hot mix asphalt plug, and the purple is the base repairs. That, those hatches would basically just get moved out onto a separate demolition sheet. So, there, there's, um, you know, when the demolition is completely separate from the plan set, you can have a demolition sheet, because there's certain areas that are outside of your improvements, and maybe your demolition is different than what is, uh, your, in your improvements. So, if areas differ, then you can't, for example, if you had a median that you were demol- um, demolishing, and what you're putting back is not exactly the same thing. But in this particular case, uh, it is mainly a concrete project, so all the areas that are getting ripped out would be getting replaced. And so, we, we did extensive review of the grading. Uh, that is one particular area where you can have excessive overruns in terms of the areas of the concrete that you will need, and may need additional demolition. So, we checked every single con form against the asphalt, against the adjoining, um, sidewalk flags, and as well as towards the homes on the driveways. So, there are significant grade changes on this project, because what you're taking is a sidewalk with driveways, and you're flattening them out in order to make them ADA compliant. So, the con forms against the homes and their driveways is significant, and because of this, we saw that already, that we reached out to the private property owners, and we got temporary construction easements in order to work inside their properties. And all of that is captured in all the hatches, and we also include allowances within our bid unit quantities in order to account for additional concrete, which is needed when we go out into construction, and we figure out that maybe we need additional couple of flags of concrete here and there because of our grading needs. So, um, before I jump into the next question, I'd like to stay here and talk about the landscape plans that were requested. So, in addition to here, we also have what is in blue and what is in green. So, in blue is the planner areas, and then in green are the tree locations. So, there's, on this plan set, there's one location for a tree to be removed, and there is also tree locations that are potential additional tree locations. So, under our tree ordinance, we are required, whenever we remove a tree, to replace it at a two-to-one ratio. So, on this project, we are, we are removing three trees, and on the plan sets, there are a total of three, six additional tree areas, for a total of nine tree locations. So, for the ones that are, we are removing, we can definitely replace the tree and put it back in the same place. For the three additional trees that are required, it will be within one of the potential six locations, if it can clear what we call the underground service alert, which is USA on the project, so that it is not conflicting with utilities on the project. So, if it can clear utilities, we'd be happy to install up to six additional trees for a total of nine, but if they cannot clear any of the utilities in the six additional locations, then we would not be able to install it with the project, and we'll do what's required under the ordinance to, as, pay out of the project as an in-lug fee, so that it can be installed at a separate location. So, that's, when, uh, so this is the third comment, is that there was a requested landscape plan, and while I just referenced, the three replacement tree locations are shown in the plans, with six additional potential tree replacement locations, and it's all highlighted in the reference sheet C6. So, a fourth question, the commissioner requested for a tree protection plan to be included with the plan set. The tree protection plan is part of the Arborist Report, which we included as part of the project specifications. The Arborist Report has detailed requirements for the tree protection measures. A fifth question, the commissioner had raised concerns about existing traffic conditions in the project area. The one-way arrows at the entrance to Carmel and Santa Maria will be added to the project by additional unit quantities on the bid schedule. Paloma will have new directional bike boulevard stencils to indicate the direction of traffic. And six, on sheet C4, can a new curb ramp on Beach Boulevard at Paloma across from the project site be added to the project? The new curb ramp on Beach Boulevard across from the south side of Paloma will be added to project, again, also by additional unit quantities on the bid schedule. Um, oh, sorry. So, there are, uh, various additional comments, um, around, there were 20 additional comments for the project, which are, uh, shown on Attachment F. So, um, just want to go over also, uh, about what is under review by the planning commission tonight. So, there is a CEQA recommendation, and to find if it is category exempt, uh, from the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA, and there, we're looking for a Class 1 and Class 4 exemption for minor alterations. And then... We are also... We're looking for two findings in order to have a local coastal development permit issued. As, on, one is a finding for Coastal Act Policy 2, that the development shall not interfere with the public's right-of-way access. While the construction activities may limit access for a short period, the proposed project will improve public access to the sea, that will improve conditions for individuals to walk or bike to the coastline. And then this, uh, second finding is that development is conforming with the public recreational policies of Chapter 3 of the California Coastal Act. And a portion of the project site is located on the nearest public road to the shoreline. The project proposes to add and enhance bike-imped facilities within the public right-of-way within the coastal zone. And then, lastly, is, uh, a tree permit is required for the project, and as I previously mentioned, we are in, uh, in compliance with tree ordinance. Uh, we are removing three trees, and we will be replacing it at a two-to-one ratio, or we will be, um, paying into in-lug fee for the additional trees that we cannot reinstall, or install into the project. Uh, pass it back to James Lynn.
Thank you, Roland. And so, per the information provided to you this, this evening, staff finds that the project is consistent with all zoning standards, applicable local coastal program, and general plan policies, and the city's bicycle and pedestrian master plan would have no negative effects on coastal resources, and would not create any identified negative neighborhood impacts. As designed, the proposed project would improve bicycle and pedestrian connectivity and usage within the coastal zone, and importantly, will bring these public facilities up to compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. For these reasons, staff recommends the planning commission find the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approved coastal development permit CDP-456-23, and tree permit TP-11-24 by adopting the resolution, including the conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and incorporate all maps and testimony into the records by pref, by reference. And that concludes our presentation, and staff is available for questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, do commissioners have questions for staff? Please.
Yeah, I know recently, the new, I think it's Local Coastal Land Use Plan effort in the city was suspended. Is there anything in the revised plan that would, had been proposed and discussed with the people that would be in conflict with this project?
Thank you for the question. Uh, the local land use coastal, uh, plan is still ongoing. It has not been suspended. We're still working on that, so, um, could you please re, uh, repeat that last part of the question, sorry?
Well, I guess I'm saying that the project complies with the existing local coastal land use plan. Is there anything in the version that's being discussed, or is in process, that, that would, um, have any conflict with this project? The new version.
I'm not completely familiar with it, but we can look into that.
Thanks for the question, Commissioner Godwin. This is Brianna Harkushia, Senior Planner. From my understanding, um, we evaluated the project based on the certified local coastal land use plan. The one that you're referring to is a plan that is under review by city council, um, so it wasn't considered during the evaluation of this, this project.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Wright, and then Commissioner Redfield.
Sure. One thing that I noticed is, is you said you would need to go back to, to get more funding, because you have a shortage of time and things, but I want to be clear, that if we ask for something, and we don't get it, it puts us in a very awkward position, where we need to vote on something, and we haven't been given all the information that we've been asked for. I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but as a general rule, I'm not particularly comfortable with that. I do understand and appreciate that staff is very much overworked, and I do appreciate how hard you work on that, particularly on projects like this. I am so appreciative of how you guys went out, found us the funding to do this great project. I think it's a great thing for the city. So, I guess I would look for in the future, if there are things that you can do to make the plans more understandable to all of us, such as the demolition plans and the landscape plans. You now know that for the future, so if you could incorporate that into your work product for the future, that would be appreciated. I have a little bit of a hard time approving something if we've asked for something and haven't received it. You want to comment on that?
Commissioner Wright, I just want to say, we're not at deliberations at this point.
Okay. Then I have one more quick question. Let's suppose that somebody that lives on this block goes out, buys their dream car. Let's suppose that it happens to be a nice new Corvette, real low to the ground. Are they gonna scrape pulling into their driveway?
So, we, we have, um, taken all the grades into consideration here. So, there, there will be, um, you know, our standard driveway slopes, and, uh, if, if, if it's a very low-profile car, um, you know, then, you know, it can scrape on anything, even the current driveways, the, the way they are now. However, you know, the, the way our standards are, um, it will be sufficient for a standard sedan to not bottom out. And that was the goal when reviewing the grades so carefully, and in order to change the grades and go into private property, is to correct that, so it does not have such dramatic grade changes.
And would you go so far as to say that what you're doing is actually improving it from the existing condition?
There are certain situations where it will be improved in from the existing condition, that's correct.
Okay.
And i, if I may, Commissioner Wright, I can comment on the level of detail that was brought forth in front of planning commission, because that was something that was discussed while preparing for this meeting, and, um, you know, what we could do in the future is, because of the review that's under, um, review by the planning commission, uh, you know, it is a general concept that can be brought forth in order to determine some of the two findings, the CEQA exemption, and then also, uh, the tree protection, or tree ordinance conformance. Um, we, we can bring a conceptual plan in the future. The challenge with getting, uh, the, the level of comments, like, we, if we had received demolition and planned, uh, landscape plan requests at a 35% similar, then we can definitely at, at, request the consultants to add it in, but then this would have generated possibly six to 12 additional sheets, and there's only 17 sheets on the project. So, you know, a general trend that has, um, been done here from the engineering division is that a lot of times, they don't spend as much on the, the design, and, uh, in this particular firm, NC, they work on our resurfacing projects, and then the curb ramps in particular, so this is generally a concrete project, uh, because we're mainly just replacing sidewalk and driveways. So, they do not have an incredible level of detail on some of their curb ramps and concrete improvements, uh, and a lot of that is taken into construction and sorted out. So, it, it's a trade-off. So, if we spend more on design, then we have less to spend on construction. So, for example, if we were to add the demolition and landscaping plans, I suspect they will request close to $30,000 or so, because right now, we have to change, not just and add on to these sheets, we have to remove information on the sheets that are already there. So, for that cost, we can build two curb ramps, for example. So, it's, it's a trade-off about, you know, whether or not we feel that there is, um, a huge construction issue, and that, are there constructability issues with the plan set? So, we did review that very closely with the grades, and, uh, during plan review.
Would, would you say in concept, though, that you disagree with my position, that if we ask for something, we should be provided it, to make a informed decision, or do... Or do you disagree?
I don't disagree. I think in terms of timing when it was brought forth is what I'm trying to clarify, is that, you know, we can definitely bring forth something earlier and we can incorporate comments. It's just challenging to do it at this point.
I understand and I support you. I actually didn't have a problem with the plan. What I have a problem with is that concept. And I'd rather prevent it in the future by saying something now so that in the future, we don't have these problems. It's not about this project. And I do appreciate what it is that you've tried to do in a limited amount of time in order to be able to keep the basically free money that we're getting to do this great project. And I appreciate all that and respect it. So, I don't want you to think that I'm upset or mad or anything. I'm just trying to look down the road so that we don't hit the same curb.
Definitely. And we appreciate the comments, and this was all the comments from the planning commissioners on this project. And we have, for the most part, incorporated a lot of the design comments. It's just the way that I have incorporated it is not necessarily with a plan change.
Okay. And I'm going to count that as like a logistics question, but I think let's make sure we save whatever further kind of commentary and deliberation for after-public comment.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
But use the microphone.
You had, microphone, yes. Thank you. You had mentioned, as far as the USA's go, that's kind of to be determined, the additional trees. And I believe you mentioned there could be an in-lu fee if it's determined that the additional trees are not placeable. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner Redfield. So, you know, the underground service or the USA markings, I mean, if we found, for example, a water main or water services were in conflict with the proposed locations, it would be very costly to realign a water main. And there might not even be space to do it in the street.
Yeah, there's, I know there's several trees in this project. Many of these are in the protection zone, only three to be removed. Are the arborist evaluations of the trees on private property conveyed to the property owners? In other words, do they, once the evaluation is done, are they informed of their tree is great or poor or whatever? They're all graded on the, you know, in the project rating system, obviously. So, I'm just curious if that is relayed to the property owners, that they may or may not know.
So, we haven't done a notification to all the property owners yet. All the locations are stated in the arborist report, and we will do that ahead of the project. And then, there's also, there was a community meeting that was done for the project, and we haven't heard any objections with the removal, as long as they were getting to be replaced.
Okay, I have another question, if I may. On Packet Page 26, there's several design in Diagram 2, and they're curb designs, standard engineering stuff. Why are Type F curb, this is a personal thing of mine, not incorporated? There, I grew up in a town where they had all that as brand-new development. They do not have issues of drainage. They're all obviously engineered for proper drainage. And it's just a curious thing to me why we use hard curbs, which ruin wheels, make it very difficult, obviously, for pedestrians or whatever, for ADA compliance now, since, you know, we have the curb cuts and the slopes. It's just a curiosity question, basically. Cost or whatever.
So, the, I just want to clarify for everyone, the Type F curb is what we also call a roll curb. So, it's more of an aesthetic question. If an area has roll curbs, we typically will put back the roll curbs. In this area, there are only what we call the A curbs, so the vertical curbs. So, whenever you transition from the roll curbs to the vertical curbs, the tops are actually, they will fluctuate, so you have to transition back and forth. So, in order to make the change, the whole neighborhood will have to undergo the change. It's not as simple as, I mean, we are doing a lot of blocks in this project, but it will transition out to other areas, and then they will go back to the vertical curbs. So, it's more of an aesthetic. Now, you have transitioning curbs everywhere. The area, the whole neighborhood doesn't have the same curbs.
If I had one more, if I may. On Page 95, this is probably going to go to the Director, Endroom Director here. On Page 95, just a clarification, it states the project does not have 2040 general plan land use designation and does not have a 1980 LCLUP designation. Can you just clarify those specifics on that?
Commissioner Redfield, so the reason for those designations are that since the project area is mostly in the public right-of-way and also across different streets, so they have different zoning. Each parcel has their own zoning and general plan designations, and that's why that's listed as such for this project.
Right, thank you for that.
My first question is regarding Sheet C6. Why was there only one sheet included? So, it, the highlighted sheet, why was only one plan sheet included?
So, the highlighted plan sheet was just an example for everyone to see that, how the information was conveyed. And that was, I chose the busiest sheet for everyone to see. I mean, that basically can get transferred to all the other sheets. It does take a good amount of time to highlight everything, so that's why I just chose to have a template. You know, a lot of contractors may come out and they will highlight this themselves too before the construction.
My next few questions are regarding Attachment F, so Packet Page 101. Item number two regarding the commission's question about using reclaimed water for irrigation. So, is the plan to install recycled water irrigation infrastructure or not?
So, we do not plan to have irrigation installed with the project. For the grant, we are funded to do ADA improvements and also to resurface the street. So, in addition, irrigation lines would be costly. We are currently over budget on the project as well. So, we are planting the water with the water bags. And then, during tree establishment period, we'll be using the potable water.
Just out of curiosity, watering manually with the water bags, how often does that watering occur? I'm guessing that's Public Works personnel?
Yes, we have a 30-day maintenance period that a contractor will be responsible for. After that, it will be city staff that takes over. And I'll pass it over to our city arborists to answer the question on the frequency.
In terms of frequency, the watering bags usually last about a week before they need to be refilled. So, it'd be a weekly drive-by with a water truck and...
And I guess I'm not super familiar. So, is it, if you say that the water bags last a week, so do they sit?
They're zipped to the base of the tree, and they remain in place, and then they get refilled through the top and slowly drip out of the bottom.
Okay, got it. My next question is Item 11 regarding traffic calming. So, in the response, it says comments on traffic calming should be directed to Public Works/Engineering for an evaluation and response. I'm wondering if Public Works could give a response.
Yes, I think the intent there was that, you know, we can take some of the comments and look at it after the project is implemented because the, there's a bobbing and bobbing out of the curb and the existing conditions, and so it should serve as a calming. It should serve to calm the traffic with some of the improvements that are out there. We can reevaluate the project, and some of these elements can be added to the project after this project as well, because this one is mainly an ADA and resurfacing project, so we don't have budget for the traffic calming elements. And we are close to, we'll figure out when we go out to bid, but we're close to $600,000 over budget. So, all of these elements are going to have to come out from the city's funds. But we can, if we determine after the project is complete, there's additional traffic calming measures that are needed out there, we can always implement it with separate projects. We took, we did do a lot of investigation into the comments, and we took, we looked at our traffic surveys, and it was, it did show that 85% of the traffic was below the speed limit. So, usually as, per certain standards that, you know, like MUCCD, they recommend traffic calming measures when you have traffic over the 85%. So, right now, it's under, but we can definitely take traffic counts and traffic surveys after the project's complete to see if there's any improvements in the speeds.
Okay, thank you. Next one's on Item 18, which is, let's see, if a crosswalk could be added between two curb ramps? And the response mentioned that it wasn't warranted. I'm just wondering how that warrant was determined?
So, that warrant was also based off the speed and the traffic volumes. There's also a maintenance that's in this area because of the sand overtopping that's constantly happening during the winter. And again, we can look at that improvement after the project is complete, and if there's additional traffic calming measures that are needed, then we can implement that. But then, there is a maintenance concern is why that was not able to get put in.
I guess maintenance, so the sand would chip away at the striping?
Yes, it makes it go away, you know, deteriorate faster because of the seawater and also the sand.
Okay. Item number 19, similar question. What was the criteria for warranting that the striping for speed control wouldn't be added? I guess similar, that the traffic, basically is the response the same as your response for traffic calming?
Yes, it would be general, all the traffic calming measures that, you know, we can look into it after the project is complete with additional surveys.
Okay. That's it for now. Thank you.
Vice Chair or Commissioner Biden, do you have questions?
No, they covered me.
Okay. I have a few, but I agree that most of them were covered, including the irrigation one. So, my first question is, are the replacement tree species based on the trees removed? So, the tree, the three tree types, are those...
The replacement species were chosen based on what we see succeeding out there and what we've seen succeeding in other areas. We aren't recommending replacing the Monterey cypress that are being removed with more Monterey cypress because they grow to such a large size and aren't really appropriate for the setting with lots of small houses and lots of targets.
Okay. Are all three trees evergreen?
Sorry?
Are all three trees that you're recommending as replacement trees, are they all evergreen? I think they were the Hollywood...
Yes.
Yeah, they're all three evergreen. So, this is just a preference question. But I happen to really like the Primrose tree and the New Zealand Christmas tree, and I just don't love Hollywood junipers. So, is that like, is there any sort of logic for, could we do the other two species? And we can deliberate later, but...
We were just offering a palette that could be selected from. During discussions with staff, we also came up with Flex Leaf Paper Bark, Melaleuca Quequin Nervia. There's one somewhere in the project already that's in the data.
And are those all around the same amount of maintenance? And do they all fit the city's tree guidelines in the same way?
Yes, they're all medium size at maturity, and they'll fit the site. And at least the New Zealand Christmas tree and the Hollywood juniper are in the Pacifica Guide for Trees that Public Works has.
Thank you. So, I think my other question is also, I have a couple of questions in there, mostly for you. So, do we have to figure out the monetary amount of each of the three trees that are coming out? And then, if that, sorry, the monetary value? And then, as far as like tree replacement fund, is it based on the monetary value? Or is it a, I should know this, but I don't quite recall where we ended up with the tree ordinance update. So, if we can't, like, we have three trees that we know are coming out. We are trying to replace them with nine trees. Zero trees may fit. And what I heard you say, which I really appreciate, is that the city will do what we ask our applicants to do, which is if we can't replace the trees, we'll donate money to the tree replacement fund, we'll pay the fee. And I think my question is like, is that fee based on the value of the trees? Or is it based on a single monetary value for all trees in Pacifica?
It's based on the planting costs, basically, for planting, for preparing a site and planting a new tree, rather than the appraised value of any trees that are getting removed.
So, I'm not going to ask you right now, but I will come back to this after-public comment. If you could let me know what that number is for the three trees being removed as part of, like, after-public comment, unless you know it right now?
We didn't do appraisals.
Are they in the report? I dismissed them.
Because we, because we classified them as high-risk trees, we'd actually consider them a liability with a negative value at this time. So, there's...
My next thing that I was going to say was not a question, so I will defer it. So, out of curiosity, there is an arborist continuation meeting that's referenced in the responses to questions, and I just want a clarification on what that was. I think that might be for Director. There's a reference, I'll tell you which one it is. But on that same Exhibit F that Commissioner Berman was talking about, there's an arborist continuation meeting that's referenced, and I had never heard that saying. It's number 13. So, I was just trying to figure out what that, what that actually means.
Thank you for that question, Chair. So, I think this is referring to this meeting, the meeting that was continued. So, the arborists will be attending this meeting.
Got it. Thank you. And then, just picking up on one thing that Commissioner Redfield had said, are any of the trees on private property and out of easements? No. Okay. Great, that's...
The removals, no.
Perfect, that's what I was hoping. That's what I have. I see one more light from Commissioner, one more light from Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, just a follow-up question on that bag watering. How long do you think that that's going to take before the tree is established and self-sufficient? Is it going to be one year, two years, five years?
Roughly one to two years. During the rainy season, watering can be discontinued, assuming there's precipitation. But it's mostly just till the tree establishes itself. So, to put it simply, you go up to it and shake it and see if the soil moves with it.
And will you be writing the maintenance schedule for Public Works, or who's going to be in charge of oversight of that?
So, we are still under review of proposals for an arborist to conduct the, review of the trees during the construction, but it's likely to be our city arborist do-deck.
And then, one more quick question. I think I'm understanding this better. This isn't meant to be an end-all, be-all plan, start-to-finish, one and done. This is meant to fit within the constraints of a grant that you've applied for, and it's a smaller scope of work than necessarily in an ideal world that we would like to address.
That's correct, Commissioner Wright. So, how the grant applications work is, sometimes, you know, we look at the grant, and there are certain requirements, and it could be, in this case, the bike-imped facilities. But what also restricts us in terms of the amount of funding we go after is the total But what also restricts us in terms of the amount of funding we go after is the total pot. And then we have consultants who, it's all they do is go after grant applications and they assist us with these applications. And they recommend to us how much we should go after. Because, you know, there could be infrastructure needs in here, which we could try to go after with the grant. And you can apply for a ten million dollar project, but if you, there's only ten million dollars, it's just unlikely for them to award that grant to us. An example also is I recently applied for bike lanes on Oceana. And, you know, in terms of infrastructure improvements, there, there's a lot that can be done. But then, you know, we tried to get a couple of pedestrian elements and then the bike lane into that project. And then what was restricting us was just the funding that was available. So yes, we can come in and do what we can, and then we can continually just go after other applications and continue to build and, you know, the infrastructure needs. But it's challenging because of how the infrastructure was built in the city with a lot of the subdivisions that it's challenging to come in with just one project and just fix everything in the area at the same time. So we can just, I mean, that's the best we could do is just fix it what we can.
So we're looking to make progress, we're not looking for perfection. We just want to keep moving forward, biting it off as we can and as funding is available, is what I'm hearing.
That's exactly what it is. Thank you, Commissioner Wright.
Also, I want staff to know that my chair hit my butt and I voted by accident.
Okay, Commissioner Redfield, and then I think Commissioner Berman has one more?
No, that's.
Oh, Vice Chair, okay. Commissioner Redfield.
Another question for Mr. Yip. You had mentioned that it's over budget currently in the process. And do we know what fund, do you have a designated fund that that overage is, is assigned to?
So I looked at our fund balances, and so we have Measure W, Measure A, and our Senate Bill One, which appears to have fund balances, and we can pull from those funds. And that's to be verified with finance when it's time for the award.
But as far as you know, our allocations are there for that funding?
That's correct. We did check the fund balance with the finance, and then when at the time where we will reconfirm.
More of a comment, hate to sound like a broken record, but I've made repeatedly the comment that the curb ramps aren't oriented right on Palmetto. They don't, Detail B, I think, is acceptable if it was constructed as shown, which is supposed to be a typical detail. And I had made a request that if you couldn't make a curb ramp that didn't require you to enter into the live traffic to cross in the parallel direction, that we could, could we look at two ramps? Or widen the ramp? The, the response shows to, in multiple places, that the only thing that was looked at was the multiple ramps. And I can appreciate that that's not always possible. But just as a comment, because you guys will be managing this construction, please, please make sure that when these ramps are installed, they're installed such a way that you can push a stroller or a wheelchair or, you know, any other wheeled device perpendicular to the flow of traffic on Palmetto or Beach without forcing you into the flow of live traffic. Because I walk down that street several times a week pushing a stroller or, you know, pushing a little kid on a bicycle, and it drives me nuts, like, looking at a line that's out of level every single time because it's just, it's not constructed per this detail.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. It, it looks like there's some grading challenges here and why there, that's probably why there's so much landscaping is because there's dramatic grade changes here. But I, you know, I've done a lot of ramps, I've done hundreds in San Francisco when I was in private consulting. I will look into this in construction and see if.
Just keep an eye on it because it matters a lot to the walkability, right? And the feasibility and feeling safe on the sidewalk. I'm not asking for anything more from you guys, just, just to note it.
I will look into this in construction.
Okay. I think now we're going to go to public comment, and then we can come back for additional Commissioner questions and deliberation. So I have one speaker card, just a reminder, if anyone wants to speak on this item, to bring a speaker card to staff. Or if you're on Zoom, press the raise hand button. If you're dialing, press star nine to raise your hand. So Bob Luthan, and if I've mispronounced your name, feel free to correct me, you have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm a Sharp Park resident for forty-plus years, and I'm on Santa Maria, where we'll be directly affected and ultimately benefited by this project. I've attended all but one of the meetings, public meetings. And perhaps the meeting that I missed, you might have discussed some of this, and I apologize if that's the case. But I, you know, I'm concerned that it wouldn't come up more than once, if it did come up then. Let's start with the, I'm also, we also mentioned, I'm a building contractor, so I'm very familiar with projects and how they can go astray, especially when you're opening up problem areas that have hidden issues. And these streets in Sharp Park are, are flawed with many issues that could surface. And I would really like some counsel and planners to address. How those are going to be, you know, you're not going to find a lot of this information out until you start the digging, although you could spend more money up front and do a more detailed investigation right now. You know, the gas lines, the water lines, the sewer laterals. Every single property that you are constructing, the sidewalk in front of the ramp, are going to, you're going to be dealing with those, those utility issues. Are you just going to pave over? Are the laterals that are decrepit and need to be replaced? Are they just going to be overlooked? Or are you going to go in there and realize, okay, this, this is broken? Gas lines are very, very close to the water lines? I mean, these issues are all over our neighborhood. And I don't see any discussion about how that's going to be handled, and that is a huge cost overrun. And you say you're six hundred thousand dollars over budget right now, just on the planning side, without even putting a shovel in the ground. I think this really needs more detailed discussion and answers, questions and answers. I also haven't heard any discussion about how, maybe it's, maybe you guys have talked about this, but where are all these residents going to go during this construction project? You know, are you going to, from the last meeting, it sounded like there was not very much detail going to be asked for on the contractor's side for the process, you know? Is it, and it ought to be able to be detailed out right now, you know? One side of the street, which side, when? How much time are you allotting for it? They said you're trying to get through this in sixty, sixty days. I can't see that happening. I'm so glad you postponed this decision to not try to push it into, after the fog fest because, you know, be looking at winter very shortly. So I would like to know, are we going to open up the city lot over there across from the Le Bron Church? Is that going to be available for the residents? I mean, and every single block is going to have, you know, tens and twenty, twenty vehicles nightly that are parking in, within that block. Where are they going to go? Where am I going to go? Am I going to have access to my driveway during the project? I don't know that, I haven't heard answers to these questions. Lastly, I, I'd like to, I'll probably go ahead and put my own sidewalk in with, working with the city on the design and this and that, to make sure it conforms to your situation that the grant applies to. But I would like to know, is there any, what's the city's position on that? Can I go ahead and put my sidewalk in ahead of time? Perhaps a lateral as well? Get my situation straightened out so that when this happens, it's not going to be a tremendous disadvantage to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That is the only speaker card that I have. We'll go over to Zoom, if anyone on. We have two raised hands at this time. Scott, you may unmute yourself. Scott, are you able to start speaking?
Good evening, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. One, I haven't seen in the conversation or any documents, possibly I missed it, but in reference to the water flow on our street during heavy downpours in the winter. We're on, on this block of Paloma, we're at the base of the mountain, and the water tends to flow very fast down our street. And the current, her bump outs sort of break up that momentum. I'm just wondering, I'm not looking for specifics, but I would just like some reassurance that that was factored in so that the, the speed of the stormwater isn't going up our driveways into our yards. So that was my first question. And the second one, I'm not clear, when the trees are removed, the three trees, and are placed by six, how many of those trees will end up on our block? Or will they be spread out to other parts of Sharp Park? It's unclear to me, you know, whether our block is being enhanced or diminished by the removal of the trees. Those are my two questions, thank you.
Thank you very much for your, your comment. Let's go to the next raised hand. Our next raised hand is Rob. Rob, you may unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, this is Rob Georges, I live in Sharp Park area. I was just wondering for the trees that are being replaced, or the, the new trees that are being recommended to go in, are those native trees or are those non-natives?
Please go on with your comments and questions if you have more. We are not allowed to respond during public comment, but the commissioners can re-ask your questions.
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no more raised hands. Okay, with that, I am going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission. And I am going to take the opportunity to re-ask some of the questions that I heard so that folks have the benefit of getting responses. So starting from the top, what is, you know, engineering and Public Works plan? If, you know, unexpected circumstances come up in the field?
So for the concrete improvements, we're going relatively shallow. With the exception, maybe there are some grade changes here and there, but, you know, the sidewalks typically are around four inches thick. And if it's underlaid by what you call A B aggregate base, then that doesn't get removed. We would just recompact it and then reinstall the concrete. So we're not going as deep as the water and gas laterals. The deepest we will go is with the AC plugs, and those are nine inches. Typically with our concrete projects, we haven't had an issue with conflicts with utilities with concrete improvements. We, you know, with one of our projects, there, there is a lot of high groundwater and saturated soils in the city. And so we had to create kind of like a grade beam underneath our curb ramp in order to support it. We couldn't even put lime tree or do anything else with the soils underneath. So in situations like that, we have a contingency as part of the project that we would use. And for this project, you know, we will likely take around a ten percent contingency on the project to account for unforeseen conditions.
So like pumping groundwater as you're working?
Yes.
Okay. Is there enough cover in your experience to not have a conflict with utilities for the existing? Like, have you had conflicts with utilities during past paving projects?
We have not, not with our paving projects because, and in particular with, what's happening with our paving projects is we, we usually do something called a base repair, and that's a couple of inches of removal of the asphalt. And again, that's usually, just the depth of the asphalt usually is around four inches for most of the streets. It could be up to six if it was a larger street. So we will usually just replace that section with our base repairs, and we don't go any deeper. The type of treatments that do run into conflicts with the utilities is a, what you call a full-up reclamation or a code-in-place planing, where code-in-place recycling. And those require very large sections of asphalt to be removed. So that you might run into a water service.
Okay. That's helpful. Is, so going back to questions, if a member of the community wanted to kind of jumpstart their frontage and put their sidewalk and sewer lateral in place now, what would the city's process be?
So he's welcome to apply for an encroachment permit to perform the work. And it should be pretty straightforward to get an application in and get that approved. And we, we may ask for, if it's on the project, that we'll give him the, the plan set and with the grades, and he can build out whatever was intended on our plans. So for the resurfacing, whether it's a slurry or a complete grind and mill and overlay, we send out notices to residents to repair and replace their sewer laterals because those streets are under what you call a moratorium after the project is over. So it's a three-year moratorium. And in that situation, you know, a lot of people who've received the notices are able to complete their sewer lateral replacement before our project starts, and we intend to do that for this project as well.
Okay, thank you. Does staff want to talk about future noticing and the path to like logistical communication for affected neighbors?
So we will have a requirement for the contractor to hold an additional community meeting in addition to the one that was already done. And there will be other standard notifications that are done. We will have the contractor send out notices to the, to the residents. We will have social media, you know, Facebook, Instagram, and, and our website, as well as connected with Pacifica emails, we will send that out to the residents.
Okay. And then the last two questions I have are, do we want to just, can you give an overview of how erosion control for stormwater happens during construction? And then whether additional stormwater and the final built condition is anticipated for these streets?
So, yeah, they're, they're going to need to submit a stormwater pollution prevention plan. Those will need to implement what you call best management practices. The BMPs that are typically used are, they will have straw wallows around the inlets. They're, they're going to install foot of fabric around the inlets. And then if, you know, they, if they are vac, if they are, they need to use water for their saw cutting, for example, they, they may need to use like some sort of vacuum so that water doesn't go into the storm drain system. And then any other perimeter controls, like sil, you know, I don't know of sil fencing, but yeah. But like any other perimeter controls that are needed for the project. And, yeah, but generally, it'll probably just be some inlet protection with some straw wallows.
Okay. And the, in the final built condition, there's not additional stormwater that's going to be coming down people's streets? It should be an improved solution, I would think?
Yeah, we're not creating any additional impervious areas for the project. So there, there should not be any additional stormwater that's created as part of the project.
Okay, you are creating additional pervious areas though, clean set areas?
Yes, there will be additional pervious areas.
That's always nice, okay. And then the last thing is, one community member asked if the intention was for, and I know we don't know where trees are going because it's going to depend on field conditions, but I think the question was, if my street loses like two trees, or three, are three trees going on a different street?
So the, the areas where there is a loss of trees, the, those three trees that are being removed, we are putting a tree back in that location. And it's going to be very likely to be able to put a tree back in the same spot because there's, there was no conflicts there when we first planted there. In terms of where the remaining six potential additional trees are, we can definitely look into it. And if they all clear USA, we're going to install six new trees, so six additional trees. If, you know, we, yeah, but, you know, we, we're, our goal is to install up to nine total. So we will install all of them, and if we can't and there's only a limited, I mean, it's just going to depend on the utility conflicts. But then the replacement trees go back in the same spot.
Okay, thank you. So Director Yip, I'm now going to go back to my question that I ended on, since our trees have negative value. If for any reason at all, we can't get the amount of trees, how much is the city planning to put into the tree fund?
So I would defer to what the arborist, City Arborist Aaron Wang said. Is the cost for the replacement trees in order to replant the tree? And I believe the cost is two thousand dollars or so. It's around that. It's, it's around that amount.
Okay. So we're supposed to have six trees. If we do five, 2,000 will be donated to the tree fund. If we do three, 6,000 will be donated to the tree fund. Did I understand the math correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. In, in both situations, negative or positive, we're paying ourselves, so, okay. Who, who was next? Does anyone, did I miss any community comments?
Uh, there is one more that I had written down. Um, can you clarify that the new trees that were mentioned for consideration are native
None of the trees currently planted there are native and none of the ones planned for planting there are native. If you look at aerial photographs from a hundred years ago, there weren't any trees in the area.
I guess if anyone is concerned either one way or the other, can you speak to the reasoning of why the non-native trees were chosen?
Because they are coastal species that are adapted to assault spray environment and there aren't any native trees in this part of California that fit those, that description.
Got it. So in your opinion, the trees selected have a good chance of surviving, thriving, and also not becoming invasive?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Hopefully that covers the commenter's concerns. Um, and then one of the comments regarding stormwater, I thought I picked up a concern uh, with the bulbouts and the new planters, so extending those into the street. My understanding from the designs is something similar to what I think is already constructed on Palmetto and a few locations. Wherever there's a bulbout, drainage is still going to be continued. I think in most cases in a linear fashion with some type of gutter channel. Do you mind clarifying if that's correct?
Yes, that is correct, Commissioner Berman. Uh, the detail is on sheet D5. That's, uh, plan sheet 16. So it's exactly what you're saying. On Palmetto, uh, because of how flat the areas are, if you're, you're a flat flow line, uh, in order to extend it out, you, you know, you wouldn't be able to achieve positive drainage. So in order to allow the flow, you cut across the sidewalk area and you put in this, what you call this, um, trench drain or drain at curb detail. So it flows underneath the sidewalk and we have it, uh, across Palmetto as you mentioned.
Great, thank you. Hopefully that addresses the commenter's concerns as well. I'll give it back to the chair.
Thank you. Does anyone want to start?
If no one else will, I'm happy to. Um, one of the speakers questioned basically whether they would have continuous access to being able to park in their driveways. Could you speak to the traffic plan, the parking plan? Have you evaluated how much parking there is in the neighborhood, whether it would be sufficient to handle the load if you shut it down block by block? How are you planning on staging this, et cetera?
Yes, this was, uh, definitely brought up even during the community meetings about the parking impact. So w- when a driveway is demolished, um, th- they won't be able to access their driveways and then there will be a time when, uh, we will have to reform their driveways. And then after it's poured, even if there was a quick curing concrete, they'll still have to wait a little bit before they can drive back onto their driveways. So I suspect that there'd be, might be a period of time around two, three, except the three, if it takes a little bit longer, uh, for waiting for, you know, a certain area to get demolished and then waiting for the forms and then waiting for the concrete to get poured. So, and then waiting for it to cure before you can drive onto the driveway. So, uh, given that, you know, we did look at possibly phasing the project and the phasing requirements will be required. So they're not gonna come in and demolish all six blocks all at once for, for, you know, just for speed and then coming back and doing all the, all the work at the same time. They're gonna have to do it within areas and we will look at what's a reasonable amount, um, given the parking restrictions in the area. But something could, like, could be like one-sixth of the project because there are six blocks, maybe like a block at a time will be done so that we don't lose all the parking in the area. Um, we haven't looked at the parking lots, but we can definitely look into that, seeing what parking lots can be available, at least for the nighttime.
And during non-construction hours, will street parking be available to the residents in the event that they cannot use their driveways?
S- sorry, can I clarify with you, Commissioner Wright? Uh, so you're asking about the non-construction hours, would this, will street parking be available?
To the residents whose driveways you've now torn up.
So I'm not-
Right on, right on their street.
So, oh, I see what you're saying. Uh, so then the street parking will only be restricted if the curb and gutter needs to also be removed because it can't park right at the curb line. So if that section of sidewalk is available, uh, because it's, it's, we're just leaving it as existing and there's enough space for a vehicle, they will be able to park there at least after hours and if there's no active construction there at the time. But it would be better if they moved out of the way if they were actively working in the area.
And that will be taken into account when you decide how big an area to do to make sure that there's not too much impact on parking legs. In other words, they're not gonna need to park five blocks away from their house.
That's correct. So, you know, given the, you know, with, if it was just a block at a time and the amount that's being removed, we can see what's available in the street and just to make sure that we're not asking the residents to park too far away.
And will it be possible for residents to say drop off groceries in the daytime while construction is going on?
They, they won't have access to their driveways, uh, but then to drive up to a location that, you know, they're not actively working, um, just to drop something off is, is likely available.
And then, um, I see it a lot, but when you drive down the street, you see little holes in the side of the curb where people have attached their rain leaders to, to evacuate the water from their property and put it in to be, uh, to be treated. Are you gonna sleeve for those on each property?
So there are, uh, all of the roof drains were looked at as part of the project. Um, w- where we can, we, we would prefer that rather than having water flow across a sidewalk. There was one in particular, um, where the, th- there's existing concrete as part of their, their ramp going into their property and that's where it starts. We would have to go into there in order to correct that. And it was also outside of the scope of the project. We weren't doing sidewalk improvements in front of there. But if it's available, we will reroute it down through the sidewalk through a curb drain.
Okay. And then, uh, let's see. In terms of the notifications, how much warning are they gonna get before everything gets torn up? Are they gonna get two weeks? Are they gonna get a week? Are they gonna get a month?
So for the sewer lateral notification, we send it around three months in advance. And we can send it earlier too. There's no issues with even sending that today, uh, notifying them of a spring construction just so they can get a contractor on board. Uh, the remaining meetings, uh, you, you know, the, from the contractors and the community meeting, that would be several weeks in advance of the construction.
And so they'll know a set period of time that for this three weeks, I'm not gonna be able to assess my, access my driveway, but they'll know that a couple of months in advance.
Yes. So, uh, what's likely to happen is we need to send a notification just when we're starting work in the area. Uh, additional notifications when we're more firm on the schedule and, you know, maybe through a couple of days to a week in advance, um, we, we'll notify them that they won't have access to their driveways. And we'll, we'll definitely coordinate with all the residents in the area.
Okay. Then a quick question for the arborist. On your $2,000 replacement cost, that includes the cost of the tree, going to get the tree, cutting the concrete to put the tree in, digging the hole, putting the tree in, putting the bag on and maintaining it, I think you said for two to three years to get it established. Do you think you can get that all done for $2,000?
We're not the contractors. Um, the in lieu fee is established by the city fee schedule. I'm not sure exactly what that number is, but it's roughly $2,000.
And then does the city want to speak to how they establish the $2,000 number?
That, that generally has been the cost I've seen from another agen-, the other agency I've worked in. Um, you know, when we, we, we usually don't, um, plant trees, like one tree at a time. So there's gonna be a scale of magnitude, uh, like on Minerva, we, we, we're gonna plant like 20 additional, uh, 30 additional trees. So there's gonna be, you know, as the pot grows, then we'll do a replanting of many, many trees which would drive the cost down as well.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Do you, do you want me to go?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, jumping back to sheet C6, I think it was, the highlighted sheet. So I know previously the planning commission asked for a demolition plan and a landscaping plan. Regarding the demolition plan, especially because I think there was mention of some areas where there are significant grade changes with the new sidewalk. To me, that says that there's going to be new improvements interior to people's properties. And I think it's important that during the public hearing, the public is able to see where work in their property is going to be. I know that it was mentioned a construction easement would be dedicated along people's properties. Um, not sure how that works because they'll have to agree to those rights. But, I mean, I think that's kind of why, one of the reasons why we wanted to see a demolition plan because during this public hearing, the public needs to be able to see what impacts are gonna incur on their property.
Uh, so for every area where we needed to go into the private property, we reached out to each and individual homeowner. And then, uh, we have a document, the temporary construction easement is reviewed by, uh, our city attorneys. And then it's signed by the residents and notarized and we have it on file. So, and then the, at the time, we have reached out to them through the letter. We do show them a blown up exhibit of their own driveway to see how far into the driveway we're, we're going into their property.
So the easement documents, do they, I mean, first of all, does the resident have the opportunity to review it and review it with their own legal counsel? Or does the city just show up on the doorstep with a note, a notary to have them sign?
The, they're welcome to review it with their own legal counsel. I, I cannot confirm whether or not I think they do. Uh, it's a pretty straightforward document. So they, they do have a chance to review it ahead of time and then they will come in and then, um, our project coordinator and then the engineering division, she's a notary. So we're readily available to just have them sign on this, uh, when they're ready to come in and sign. And so there are, um, seven locations? There were a total of seven locations and then so all seven residents were able to come in and sign and get it.
Oh, so these have already been signed?
They're already been signed. It, so this is a federal fu-, the OBAG is a federal fund. This needed to get done ahead of the bidding of the project. That was a requirement from Caltrans.
Just out of curiosity, why didn't that information and the easements, which I'm guessing are now recorded, why didn't those make it into the packet?
I may have to defer that question to the planning department.
Thank you for that question. Looks like, uh, staff did not have, um, that in their possession and did not include them in the packet, but we can, um, locate them and share it with the commission if you would like to see an example or, uh, what was in those easements. Uh, but that was not something that was considered, uh, in, uh, while the packet was created.
Well, and so, uh, sorry, Commissioner Berman, because I won't let you go with your, with your questions, but I feel like when it's, you know, we had a project like months ago where we were relying on like a 60-year-old document to, for an applicant, you know, to use access in perpetuity when a community was like not excited about a project. That ma-, like, that easement, like, I would maybe want to see, but this sounds like proactive construction easements that are temporary, that are reset? Is that something you're looking for?
No, they're, I'm mainly just looking for the answer to our original questions to why we asked for a demolition plan. And I've been asking the subsequent questions of, oh, so I just found out that the easements are already dedicated. I mean, I, it's just, I don't have any comment. It's just to, I think Commissioner Wright's point, a lot of the answers in attachment F just didn't feel like real answers to me. So, especially because there's been a month and a half since the last meeting. And if work progress has been made for, for example, these, um, construction easement dedications, I think, especially because it directly relates to the content that the commission was asking for, I would have liked that to be a part of the answer, even if it was just a blanket statement of, um, we're not able to provide a demolition plan. However, staff has taken time to analyze the impacts on individual property owners and we've also been proactive in negotiating easement terms with them. So we don't have to, we can move on, but that's kind of where I was getting at with that one.
I, I mean, I totally agree with you and I agree with Commissioner Wright that it is frustrating to ask for things and then not, you know, have them. I think, if I'm, if I'm guessing right, um, I know that Director Yip was not available for the last meeting and I think that if we had him here at the last meeting, we probably would have gotten these answers, which were much more succinct and like actual answers versus a consulting engineer who was trying his best and didn't really have the answers. So I, I think, this is a very long way of saying, I think we asked on the dais last time, like, if we took more time with this, if we did all these things, like, would there be a financial impact and would we have enough time to do them? And the answer we got was something along the lines of like, we probably could continue to get the grant, you know, like, it wouldn't affect the grant. And I think what I'm reading from the staff report, and staff can jump in if I'm wrong, is like, the timing actually is important and we really needed to make a decision, even though I, like, I concur that these documents are not in the best shape. But I also, like, I'm gonna finish that up with, like, I actually really do appreciate the highlighted document that makes it clear. I took that as a way to say, like, we don't have money to pay our consultant to do it, but we, as City of Pacifica, did it ourselves to try to be responsive, even though we only had one of the six pages.
And I get that. Honestly, when I saw the highlighted sheet, my original question was, what does all this mean? So I think it was helpful that we went over it during tonight's meeting. But, I mean, also, especially if time's a constraint, then I feel like we should have seen this before us.
And that's, and that's what Director Yip said-
Earlier.
Like at the onset, was like, if he could do it over again, that he would show these plans at 35%. And then when we asked for things, they wouldn't have like spent the funds already and we could, so I think the plan is to try to do that in the future. I, I mean, I'm, I don't want to speak for staff, but it sounds like that was the thought.
That, that's correct. I, you know, when I first saw the comments, I did discuss with the planning department if it would be possible to bring possibly like a 35% or conceptual level, just so that we, we can, you know, incorporate comments in at that time. Uh, so, you know, if I may, uh, Commissioner Berman and the chair, um, the, the reason, you know, when I saw the comments was, I, I just immediately looked at the timing and just being able to come back in the meeting that's two months away. So in order to, uh, get funds to, to city council and request the city council, that's gonna take me around a month. And then at that time, I would give it back to the pro-, the consultants and they have a month to get a demolition, uh, and landscape plan to, for, for this meeting. I, I didn't think we even had enough time to do that. The other, um, issue is, is the budget and then we're trying to time it so that we can enter into the winter bidding period with typ-, typically contractors try to, um, get projects on their books during this time. Uh, it's har-, it's usually a little bit more expensive if we go out and get bids during, uh, when we're approaching the summer. So, you know, we, if we get on their books earlier, then we could have more favorable bids. This did happen on the Esplanade, Palmetto, uh, bike lane and bike and pet improvements where we did go out a couple of months ago during the summer and the bids were very high. So we had to reject all bids and then go back and we're gonna have to rebid the project and remove poss-, possibly some scope and try to do with another project. So, you know, by going out to bid as soon as we can, we have options to reject and then also look at our scope some more. Uh, and also it's gonna be cheaper bid. So there is a timing with that in, in addition to- And also, it's going to be cheaper bid. So there is a timing with that in addition to the grant deadlines. And so for the Measure M grant, we already requested one extension. So, you know, it, you know, there, I think the consultant mentioned that we can request an extension, but the granting agencies don't always have to grant it to us.
And again, I definitely don't want to take too long on this because I do have other questions and deliberation. But I fully understand exactly what you're saying. And I too have been in the same situation. I work in this industry, and I'm often that consultant where my client says, oh, I need you to make all these revisions, then I say, well, I need a change order. So I get it. I 100% get it. I just feel like maybe the last couple of months, and I understand that staff is so busy, communication's been like really difficult. So, I mean, my read through the staff report, I just, I didn't feel like my questions were answered, but they're getting answered now, so it's great. Okay, so I'm going to move on to attachment F. And I don't know, Chair, how you want to go through this, because I may have some items I want to deliberate on, one of the numbered items here, but then others may have comments too, so anyone can interrupt.
I mean, so my preference, I think that we need to make it to an approval tonight, so we don't lose these funds. Because again, we're like, we're talking about something really awesome, but we're, we're in the, like, we're in the details, which I also appreciate.
Well, I understand that, but like, a big item that I think we want to discuss is recycled water irrigation.
Oh, yeah.
Or are we just going to say, we understand we don't have any funds, we need to make the deadlines of the grant, and we know we have to approve, and we don't want to spend any more time deliberating. I'm fine with that too.
Yeah.
Because I, recently, we had a meeting that deliberated for three hours when we already knew the answer at the end. So tell me.
Here's, here's, to finish my thought. So I think what I would encourage us to do is to see if we can get to an answer tonight, right, to get to a vote. But to provide whatever non-prohibitive or non-monetary conditions that need be for everybody to be clear on how this moves forward.
Sure. My first one is, so attachment F, Packet Page 101. Item number two, recycled water irrigation. So I appreciate the explanation of how we plan to water the trees. I wanted to bring it up for deliberation with the commission because I know last meeting, we talked about how recycled water is available, and it would be beneficial to irrigate with the recycled water. I understand there's probably no funds to do it, but wanted to leave it up for deliberation.
Well, I do believe we just approved a new NCCWD fill station for their reclaimed water. And since these are bags of water, I think we should request that the city use our reclaimed water from our partner at NCCWD, if possible.
We recommend against using recycled water for new tree plantings because the dissolved salts in recycled water will accumulate and kill new trees. In shrubby, grassy settings, recycled water is appropriate, but with new tree stock, it's just, the salts concentrate in the soils and kill the roots of the new trees.
So I guess it's a moot point.
I've, I've never heard that before. I mean, we were, we installed all reclaimed water for our.
I mean, is this a similar take?
Off the outskirts.
Often redwood trees cannot be irrigated with recycled water because the salinity is too high. Is that the case for these species?
Yes. There's already just salt spray in there, which is going to challenge these trees, which are coming out of a nursery that have been fed on Central Valley Water. So if you add additional salts, rather than flushing it with potable water, it's going to accumulate to a point where the trees are unlikely to survive.
Got it. All right. I'm going to move on to item four. So when we talked about root barriers previously, and this is how I believe they're typically implemented in other jurisdictions, usually it's just a standard edge condition. It, it often isn't determined whether or not based on the type of tree that's there. Often, if there's a tree and you're putting a new sidewalk, you're going to put a root barrier. So I was a little confused with the answer in the response.
So for existing trees on site, placing root barriers is impractical because it would require cutting large existing roots. For the new trees, it's where there's sufficient space in the tree well for tree roots, installing root barriers is practical. But where most of the roots are going to need to extend into the adjoining property, then placing root barriers might restrict the growth of the trees.
So then, should the, should my interpretation of the response be that the city plans to install root barriers except in the locations where it may be detrimental to an existing tree?
To new trees. No root barriers around existing trees are just a no-go, basically.
So the city will install root barriers adjacent to the new tree plantings?
Yes.
Okay. Can that be, and this will be another one of my discussion topics in the end, especially because we don't have updates to the plans. And we don't have the bid document where a lot of the items that are added to the project are going to be represented. Is it possible to add these items as conditions of approval, just so they're documented beyond just the public record? So for example, I think the statement on root barriers needs to be clarified to where new trees will be planted, root barriers will be installed adjacent. Does that make sense?
Yes, Commissioner Burman, we can add conditions of approval to what we proposed.
Okay, thank you. My next one's item number nine. I don't know if anyone has anything five through eight?
Did you want to go in order? I think it's an organized way to do it.
Yeah, I was going to go in order, yeah.
Can I go back to number one?
Sure.
Okay. Would anybody be opposed to, instead of replacing with New Zealand Christmas tree, Hollywood juniper and Primrose tree, swap out the Hollywood juniper for the flax leaf paper bark that the city arborist said would also work?
As long as the arborist tells us that it has a suitable chance of survival, sure.
That's, I think that was the, is that, does that work for everybody? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, you were, you were on five to eight. Does anyone have anything on five to eight? Okay, go ahead, Laura.
So item number nine. I appreciate that the condition, yeah, condition number six was amended to include parking. I think condition, okay, sorry. I think item C in condition six potentially has a typo. I think it should say lane and parking closure instead of lane closure and parking. Notification, and this was a big, this was a comment that came up during our last meeting a couple times. I appreciate that the improvements will be phased, so the idea is someone doesn't have to park on a completely different street in order to access their house. But for notification, does the city plan to install, or to prop up like A-frame signs a week in advance or 10 days in advance? How's that notification going to occur? I think we talked about it before, but I forget.
So the standard requirement for the no parking signs on the A-frames is that it must be placed 72 hours in advance. So that's the latest that they can put it. They can put it earlier, but then they can, it has to be, the dates that they're working has to be correct. So it can be out there like a week in advance, and then, you know, it could be showing that, well, work in like four days or something like that.
Okay. I, I think the neighborhood would probably appreciate just placing them out there earlier, so they have ample time to plan. I am concerned, so I know that traffic control plans will be developed and implemented. I am concerned that there's a handful of people who perhaps use wheelchairs. And they are literally not going to have a way to get to their house if they have to park 100 yards away. So I just want to make sure, and I know we don't need to review traffic control plans right now, that'll occur later. But I want to put my opinion in that every home literally needs to be accessible for the people who live there, based on their needs. So if there's someone who needs a wheelchair or a walker, or they need some type of ramp into their home, that the traffic control measures should have a ramp of some sort. So I just want to mention that. My next one's 11. I don't know if anyone has anything on 10.
I think you should just keep going, and people can jump in if they have earlier ones.
Oh, sorry, 11 was already addressed. My next one is 17. Does anyone have anything before 17?
Can I just bump one little, one little item I requested? I requested before, there are several RVs I know that are most likely occupied in that, on those six blocks. Since we've talked about the notification to residents, those are basically considered residents, and has that been, you know, will a contractor be obligated to approach them for that same type of notification? Because their support systems are generally in place. They do have to be mobile, but could that be incorporated also, just, you know, a knock on, or a notification such as a door hanger, as will be utilized in the fixed residences? So I think it may, it's a minimal issue, probably. There's not a lot of them per se in those blocks, but I think it's still possibly an issue.
Yes, we had a recent paving project where we did a similar type of coordination with the RVs, and we can do something similar here as well, and get them in touch with the right contacts at Pacifica Resource Center. And, and yeah, let them know of the available alternate locations.
Can I jump on 14 real quick? You made mention of it, but I was hoping you could help explain a little more, because I brought up the sewer laterals in the last meeting. You're reaching out to each individual homeowner to tell them there's a moratorium after construction, but I'm not sure I understand what that is, and if there's any pressure being, hey, we're going to remove curb and gutter in front of your house. Now is the time. And as a third part of the question, if construction damages a existing, you know, poorly conditioned sewer lateral that you don't necessarily excavate all the way down to, but you're excavating right above, and from what I heard, we're compacting existing without necessarily determining the depth of the lateral below it. Are there contingencies for replacing that lateral afterwards?
So the sewer laterals, we will notify the residents. Typically, we do it three months in advance of the construction, before the construction starts, so that people have an opportunity to contract out with a contractor in order to replace it before our project, after which there is a three-year moratorium. We haven't had issues of damaging sewer laterals with our concrete projects in the past. Some of those areas from our concrete projects do go, you know, above the sewer laterals. But if it should, and we get a complaint, we can definitely come back and use our contingency to do the repair.
With three-year moratorium, there's certain times when a resident is required to replace their sewer lateral, right, when, like, when homes change. How would that be affected if someone sells their house a year after the project, and there's a law that requires them to replace the lateral, they're just exempt from it, or they have to wait, or how does that work?
So there are exceptions, of course. One is the sale of a home. The other one is, I mean, if you're, you didn't have issues with your plumbing before the project started, but then a year into it, your toilets started clogging. We will have an exception. It's recommended that people CCCV their laterals and just get the condition of it before the project. But, you know, if that were to happen, we would require for the pavement to be re-slurried outside of the trenches. So if your trench, you'll be 10 foot outside the trench from curb to curb. That would need to get re-slurried. So it is an additional cost if it happens, but it can still be done. It's not a lock that you cannot do work.
Thank you.
I actually have one more thing on sewer lateral. So we were, recently just did some work at our house, and we're required to do a sewer lateral, and it was quite expensive. And I'm just thinking of all the financial burden for folks that aren't really prepared to do this. Folks that are already having issues, but can't just hop to it because they get notice that there is going to be a three-year moratorium. You know, what, what kind of consideration is made for people in that position?
So I am, there are some grant funds that the city has for the sewer lateral program. We can get them in touch with wastewater, see if they qualify for it. But as far as the project is concerned, the project can't contribute to those funds because we are required to use the grant funds for what we put on our grant application, which is ADA and ADA improvements and then the resurfacing. But then they can get something from wastewater as a contribution, as part of their grant program.
Commissioner Burman, do you mind if I go back to the reclaimed water in item two?
Sure.
Okay. So I checked with the general manager of NCCWD, and for for our water, our reclaimed has a lower salinity than freshwater that's serving customers in the delta. So if public works, because it's free and it's three blocks away, right, it's not like, you know, have a project in Alpitas, you have to drive three miles to truck and reclaim water. It's free and next to the project. So just look, and if the consulting arborist looks at the data and says it's good to go, let's do it. It's part of our general plan, policy, and goals. We should just try to do it. Okay? Go ahead, Commissioner Burman.
All right. Item 17, I know Commissioner Ferguson already brought this up, but I wanted to just bring it up again in case we wanted to discuss anymore. I agree with the concern that sometimes the curb ramps throughout Sharp Park are not, I think they're, they're installed to be efficient in that there's just one that serves both sides of the street, which I get. And I understand that some locations with this project, there's not room for two curb ramps, specifically at Paloma and Francisco. So I appreciate that. But I just want to echo what Commissioner Ferguson said. If we could just pay attention during construction that the contractor is installing the ramps with the right orientation. And then the last item I have is item 21. I know it's small, but I think just adding a blue fire hydrant marker to the list of things to purchase, I feel like that's going to get lost, and it's not actually going to get installed. So I'd appreciate if it were just a part of a condition of approval. So then during final job sign-off, I mean, it's listed as a condition, so everyone's kind of aware that of what needs to be installed. So there's a couple items that we've talked about, and it's in the staff report saying that these things are going to be added to the plans. If they could just be added as conditions for the project, mainly for the contractor to keep track of.
Do you have in particular, I'm keeping track of what we're saying. Do you have in particular what you're looking for?
From memory, it's, so it's the fire height, and this could probably all be one condition. So, I don't know, bullet points or something. The blue fire hydrant marker that was missing from the plans. The two added curb ramps that were mentioned in the staff report. I think that was it. Did I recently say something about clarification? On, hmm, oh, the root barriers. Clarification on the root barrier installation.
Yeah, I was actually hoping to see as a. Yeah, I was actually hoping to see as a condition of approval, and I'll leave it to staff how best to word it and how they think it works best for them, but we talked about the phasing plan. I know we brought up the phasing plan in the last meeting. We discussed it tonight, but I don't see it represented anywhere here. Maybe it's included in the project documents somewhere in the specifications, but alluding to specifications and not attaching them is a kind of a weird move. I'd like to see that as a condition of approval, that there is some phasing plan done. Because if you look at these streets, all the street parking is taken when these people have their driveways open all the time. I mean, you can't park on these three streets most of the time. So I'd like to see a real concerted effort to push a contractor into a sort of a phasing plan that alleviates some of the stress on the adjacent areas.
So to clarify, you're looking for a phasing plan from the contractor available to the public?
The phasing plan would have to come from the city. A condition of approval that includes a phasing plan to alleviate traffic parking issues.
I had a general question about quality control. I don't know if this is the right time to answer or to ask it. So I was, I'm a resident of Rockaway, just the new asphalt project, and there were areas that were just horribly done. And we tried communicating directly with the subcontractor on site. I had neighbors reach out to the city, because the subcontractor just threw their hands up and said, we can't talk to any of the residents about this. And considering that this project has so many more details, I'm curious about the city's quality control efforts with contractors on projects of this nature.
So for this project, we will have an inspector that is going to be dedicated to it at the time of construction. So, you know, with previous projects, we've had, you know, third parties who assist us, who, you know, they're familiar with the city, they might not be as familiar with. Recently, we hired a project manager who has been helping us with our inspections for the projects, and so with the recent paving project, I believe it has gone a lot smoother this year as compared to last year in terms of the notifications and coordination with the residents and the commercial businesses. So, you know, we have internal staff now who will be available, and, you know, this is so close to the new city hall, I can personally step out there and do some quality control, too. So, but yeah, we do have some, it is sometimes better to have internal staff do some of the QA QC and inspections.
We were absolutely well notified, that wasn't really the issue, it was actually the quality of the work. I mean, the asphalt made very little effort to actually meet people's driveways. So it just looks terrible in some areas, and I wonder what quality control efforts this project manager is making?
So if there's specific areas you'd like us to look into, I, yeah, I haven't heard...
On this project, per se, like, is there going to actually be quality control happening?
So, you know, we will do inspections. In terms of the concrete, we'll inspect the aggregate base to make sure it's compacted properly. When concrete is completed, we'll be there for, to inspect the broom finishes, to make sure it's not too slippery. For the asphalt, you know, we review submittals, and we go out there, and, you know, in terms of the quality of the slurry, I'm not sure if this is the issue, the slurry does take some time for the aggregates to go away from some of the street sweeping, but it sounds like maybe it's some conform issue. If there's a specific case, you can reach out to us, and we'll have the contractors go out. We're still working on punch lists, so the contractor's not done with the project yet. There are some punch list items that we're working on.
Okay, I was just curious, generally speaking, because I'm sure that things will come up on this project as well, where residents will want to reach out to somebody, and I hope that they're able to, there's some clear process in which they can, you know, mitigate some of the issues as they arise.
Oh, for sure, yeah, we're available, and, yeah, we usually are pretty open to the public, and our office is right there for anyone to just step in to speak with us about any issues for this one in particular. I wanted to comment about Commissioner Ferguson's question about the phasing and where that gets included. So in addition to the plant sets, we have special, what we call two sets of specs. One is our special provisions, and one are technical specs. The technical specs is basically like the concrete, the asphalt specs, but then in the special provisions, we can dictate how, in particular, we want a project to be completed. So we can ask for very specific details, if we want them to phase a project so that no more than one block is done at a time, they cannot demolish more than one block at a time. We can put all of that in there, and they will have to bid the project accordingly. When they don't comply, then we can issue out liquidated damages to the contractor. So because of what happened last year, for example, you know, there was an issue with a lot of no parking signs that were placed, and no work was being done. So we changed some of the language in our special provisions and said that if a block is not done, we will charge a certain amount of liquidated damages to the contractor because of the impact it has on the residents. So we can put, you know, specifics in there, how we want the construction to be completed. Of course, you know, there's a balance between that, how much we specify, and then it's going to cause them to slow down and cost more money, but of course, we'll do whatever it takes so that it's at least possible for residents in the area to find parking.
Yeah, that's why I deliberately left it open-ended. I understand there's cost implications to structuring it too much, and I'll leave that to you guys to figure out the balance, but just so, there's something in there, right? So it's no contractor comes in and attempts the 60-day one-fell swoop, you know, demo crew comes through everywhere, and then, you know, forming crew comes through everywhere, and then they pour everything back in one swoop, and everyone's out of their access for 60 days, right? That's, I don't think that would be acceptable to any member of those streets.
Yeah, definitely, understood.
Okay. Just touching off of what Commissioner Devine said, because it kind of unlocked another two questions for me. Will there be a number posted on the no parking sign, so people could call? Again, I'm thinking of worst-case scenario, someone in a wheelchair cannot, literally cannot access their home, is there a number they could call? If there's any issues related to the traffic control or the no parking?
So typically, on the no parking signs that are on the A-frames, it's the contractor's contact will be on there. For whatever Public Works Engineering posts, I mean, you know, whether it's on social media, or it's with the Pacifica email threads, we will include our project managers' contact information on that posting.
I think that's important, because I'd imagine the only other thing they do is call 911. So, and then my other question, does the city usually require that the geotechnical engineer is present during compaction activities?
So that is not a standard, and the practice here from our encroachment permits, from the agency I worked at before in Daly City, we also did not spend the money for the compaction efforts. Usually, if the area is small, and even if you're compacting, say, for a sewer lateral replacement, because the area is small, it's easier for us to ensure that there's 90% relative compaction. When you have long trenches, yes, you have to have, you know, technicians out there with earthwork gauges, constantly testing every couple of lifts, but because the area is small, it hasn't been an issue. You know, although there are failures in this city, there could be other issues there. But then, in terms of the sidewalk, we will usually, you know, here they hit it with a shovel, or you could tiptoe on it, that's usually, you know, a good number of pounds per square foot when you do that. So if it doesn't move, then we will consider that acceptable.
Okay, I just brought it up, because it could be another means of quality control for consideration.
Are there door hangers as part of the notification process?
Yes, we have been doing that for our previous projects, and the contractor will be required here as well.
Yeah, I've got a question on, given we don't have a demolition plan, on the demolition process. Are we talking about a few individuals with jackhammers? Are we talking about some jackhammers and a bobcat? Are we talking about a bulldozer? What do you envision you're going to use during, or the contractor's going to use during this process? I know they have some freedom to choose, but give me an idea of what you're looking at.
So there will be jackhammering, there'll be saw cutting in order to get the lines cut out between either the hot mixed asphalt or the flags of the concrete. Then there will be a backhoe to lift everything that's demolished, put it into a dump truck, and there could be some smaller bobcats here and there as needed, but yeah, that, there shouldn't be a lot of, there wouldn't be a lot of equipment, it's just mainly for that. And then, once the concrete is completed, they will come in, and they will have a slurry truck, they will, oh, sorry, there will be an asphalt truck to do all the base repairs. And, oh, sorry, there might be some technical difficulties here with the video.
Yeah, the internet is out.
Oh, I see. Yeah, so I'll just complete what I'm saying. The base repairs, there'll be an asphalt truck, the, they probably don't need a roller, because the areas are smaller for the base repairs, so they can compact it with just a lawnmower type of machine.
Is that something that goes in once and is left permanently, or is that something you remove under some conditions, and if so, what conditions?
So the condition where you have a hot mixed asphalt plug is in front of the lip of the gutter. So the gutter is, it needs to be formed, and you can't form it against asphalt without it be looking pretty jaggedy. So in order to form the gutter, you have to rip out around a foot, and they call it than what you would normally see from a base repair, and that's mainly just so you can form the gutter of the, of the concrete.
Okay. Some pump or something would be used for rain during rain-water removal after that? I know one of the, the public comments was about storm flow speed. Do you have any concern about any of those things, and do I understand it correctly?
Yeah, that comment may be for the stormwater management during construction, in case, say, they excavate an area and it starts raining, maybe you have to pump some of that area out. Given the timing here, we're aiming to do spring construction, we'll bid out right now, and then hopefully the NTP will start sometime in spring. But they'll have to definitely work around all that and do all the stormwater management that's needed, and all the necessary BMPs.
Okay. Finished?
All right. Well, I don't have any lights, so I'm going to try to restate kind of what I've heard, and then you guys can jump in if I've missed anything, and then if someone would like to make a motion, that would be great. So I have several conditions, and I would also love Director Yip, if you wouldn't mind weighing in, if any of these seem untenable. So let's just make sure we're all being really realistic. So I have, I'm going to go in order. So the city arborist shall review the quality of local reclaimed water from the NCCWD fell station to determine if it's appropriate for new trees, and if so, reclaimed water shall be used unless it becomes unavailable. The species on site for replacement trees will be New Zealand Christmas tree, Primrose tree, and flax leaf paper bark. there was a nesting bird survey that was volunteered, which I think we should do and add to the conditions. The contractor will notify RV owners via the Pacifica Resource Center of the forthcoming construction. The contractor will provide a contact number for affected residents in case there are We are going to recheck ramp orientation, prioritizing orientation for ADA and folks with strollers, and adjust if determined feasible and optimal by the city engineer. And then I have a phasing plan from the city to alleviate traffic and parking concerns. Commissioner Berman, I did not accurately capture your root barrier comment enough to...
Yeah, just that clarification needed to be added. It could be a condition of approval, or perhaps in the record, that root barriers would be installed adjacent to new trees. I guess that's it. I think if the conditions of approval that were just read into the, or the concepts of the condition of approval that were just read into the record with Director Yip's agreement, I would just suggest that the motion for approval would provide authorization to staff to, to wordsmith the conditions of approval, the precise wording of the conditions of approval.
Give up some discretion.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Basically, are you saying that...
Could we ask the chair to give staff five minutes to go ahead and draft that course? Why don't we take a break, get a drink of water?
Commissioners, this will not take five minutes.
Okay, we'll just, yeah, why don't you?
It needs further review. Drafting conditions on the fly is generally not recommended, but staff tries its best. So we just ask that, since the conditions were clearly laid out, and staff understands the spirit of the conditions, that the city attorney's office and staff have the opportunity to ensure that the wording is clear and effectuates the intent of the commission.
I'll give you the benefit of the doubt here, but I think you can see that there's trepidation on all of us because of recent asks and not getting what we're asking for, but...
This is a request from the city attorney's office, if...
Right, I understood. With that, I move that the planning commission fines the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and approves the Coastal Development Permit CDP 456-23 and Tree Permit TP11-24 by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and those read out by Chair Hauser and Commissioner Berman, with staff's discretion to write those out as they see appropriate, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
So that brings us to commission communications. Does anyone have a communication that they would like to share? Commissioner Godwin?
I just think voting's really important, and I know I voted today, and I hope everyone else does as well.
Yeah, I'll second that. Commissioner Wright and I liaised for the meeting to the council, and Commissioner Wright, I don't know if you wanted to report out?
Since you were the star of the show, I would think it would be more appropriate.
Well, so there were two, there were two different items that were kind of heard at the same time regarding the quarry. One was an appeal from a member of the public, and one was an appeal by the applicant. And the kind of short answer is that the council upheld the commission's action. And I believe that the next step is that the findings for denial that the council recommended will come back to the council on the consent calendar, and the council will invoke on them to, again, kind of submit what we had decided, but also with the findings for denial. And that's it.
I would just add that it was also unanimous.
Correct, it was also unanimous. And I think that brings us to staff communications.
We don't have anything to report today.
Okay, with that, is there a motion for adjournment? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.